As usual, I think, David, right?
Yep.
Uh, so we'll start with with open session. Is anybody here for open session? Ed, hello.
Hi.
Who are you?
I'm great, thanks for asking.
Who are you?
Oh, Ed Blanchard, twenty-three East Comet Pond Road, Hubbardston.
That's good.
Um, I'd like to request that the the select board take a look at the service level we get with our current building inspector from Gardner. Um, I don't know when our contract is up with them, but um, I would like to ask if you'd at least take a look into the service level that we get. And uh, I can remember when Larry Brandt um was our building inspector and he did another town as well. And there's other, and I know that there's not a lot of building inspectors around, but other other towns uh share building inspectors. Uh, the reason for my request, um, I think that our service level is not where it should be for for our town. I can cite personally two instances. One, myself um was looking to sell a piece of land. Uh, got him all of the paperwork that he asked for and that took a a, I would say about a week and never got a decision back for more than three weeks and almost lost the sale of the land because of it. Um, this is not about his decision-making ability whatsoever, it's just about service level to the town. I think if you ask Tom Collier, he would also say that he's had similar circumstance. And I've asked him for a ruling on uh on parcel uh in town. And uh, I think I'm at two and a half months now. And thank goodness we have Mallory, cause she does a wonderful job of following up on people's requests. And but she's as only, she's as only good as what answers she can get from uh the service level that we have. So my request is that the, uh, that uh, if the town could look into other alternatives once this contract is uh is up, I don't know whether, do we do that annually?
It's a three-year contract and it expires this coming June.
Perfect.
Yes, perfect, exactly, so.
You know, and and here again, I'm I'm one person, but uh, you know, if you wanna ask around other people their opinions of whether we think we're getting a good level of service, um, I'd be more than glad to have you do that.
We haven't had to ask, cause they've come to us. So you are e pluribus unum, uh, without a doubt, so.
Alright, well, I'm glad, you know, I didn't wanna make this an individual complaint because it's not.
No, no, we we wish more would come in this forum.
Cause I don't have much involvement uh at all, but I do deal with a lot of business people who have shared with me a similar concern.
Yeah.
So if uh, if we could take a peek at that before we go into another contract and see if there's other alternatives, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, we we are, David, you wanna just?
Yeah, so I I, that was one of the things I learned early about Hubbardston is that the building inspection service isn't where it should be. Um, I went to see the mayor um over in uh Gardner and had a conversation about the about the the problems that we're facing. He said that he would be speaking to his staff to make sure that the that was uh uh followed through on. I didn't see any evidence that anything was happening, so I talked to the building inspector directly and asked, you know, so what are the impediments that you have to enforce zoning bylaws in the town of Hubbardston? And he pointed to a number of specific examples of where we need to uh improve. Um, that's part of our conversation tonight with the planning board. Um, he also gave me some information which I didn't think was accurate. Uh, he said that we didn't have non-criminal disposition for taking care of uh zoning infractions. We do. It's right in the zoning book. Uh, s- he said that we we didn't have um that's general law chapter one forty-eight A, which allows tickets to be uh given out and in fact, it's a general bylaw that applies to all cities and towns. Um, there were a number of other things that that he suggested that needed to be improved, but didn't actually needed any action at all. All the tools that he needs, that he thinks he doesn't have, are right there, with the exception of what we're gonna talk about tonight.
So it sounds like we've heard a lot of excuses on things.
Well, my second instance is just uh, it's just whether a a particular shed is too close to a lot line. And uh, he had been to the property uh previously and and before my asking that question. And that was two and a half months ago and that, you know, that's, that's an easy, do I wanna go back and look at it again or 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 not? And uh, and Mallory's uh prompted, I think, once or twice, so anyways, uh, it's good that the boy's looking at it. Thank you very much. Appreciate uh your, your doing that.
Okay.
Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, thanks, you too.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Seth.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for open session? Nope, okay, well, we'll get right to the agenda. Um, announcements will be uh, will be at first then. What do you got?
Alright, so this Saturday, the seniors are having a Thanksgiving dinner over there at the senior center. Um, you do have to sign up, but the, they're having, and the reason why I know this is cause the girl, my Girl Scout troop will be serving. So they're having their early Thanksgiving dinner over there at the senior center. I don't worry, I'll make sure I take pictures. Um, but that's hopefully gonna be a lovely time. They have a nice dinner planned, so it should be good. Uh, on November twenty-eighth, we have our tree lighting ceremony. Uh, it'll be between five and five-thirty, the actual tree lighting will be at five-thirty. Uh, but between five and five-thirty, I, we have, the Greens are gonna come and play some music and sing along with, I'm pretty sure this swinging singing seniors, I don't know what they're called. What do they call themselves over there?
Yes.
Yes, something like that. Um, or the seniors in general will probably be over helping sing with the Greens. Um, uh, Sanda from Parks will have some cookies and hot cocoa to give out. And um, that'll be between five and five-thirty, and then Dan's gonna emcee the whole thing. And the tree already has the lights. I put the deer up today. The big trees have all the lights up, so the last things left is um the chopper and some ornaments, but other than that, we're pretty good to go. So I will have um flyers and stuff made up very shortly for that, but plan for November twenty-eighth. We're doing it a little bit early because the light fight starts the following weekend, which brings me into December, which is the Hubbardst-
So what, real, let me, let me stop you real quick, so that, also, um, so the twenty-eighth is a s-
Yes, nope, we're ahead. Sunday, yes.
Sunday, so a lot of times we've done this during the week, so we've had it later, cause people have to get home from work, so
Yes. Yes.
The idea was to have it a little bit earlier, so it's not like a late Sunday night, and it's gonna be plenty dark by that time.
Yes, oh yeah.
To be able to do it. So this is our seventh year in a row of doing, um, after it's sort of been rekindled, um, since, you know, December of two thousand fifteen. And we had an influx every year, and then COVID sorta came down a little bit last year, but still, a bunch of people showed up, but it is, hopefully it it sort of gets out there again, cause when everyone shows up and everyone's out there singing, it's great.
Yeah, and just be careful when you walk up there. If you walk through the middle, you're gonna trip over lines. Stay off around the deer. There's electrical cords everywhere. Um, I try to keep them tidy as much as I can, but again, it's, it's just walk around the deer. Um.
Will the police be there to?
I'm, I'm gonna hope so. I just, I I'm working on everybody.
Okay. They typically are to help people across the street and, you know, that sort of thing.
Yes. Yeah, usually they are. I haven't, I haven't nailed GP down yet, so. Been busy this week, I'm like totally exhausted.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, so um Hubbardston Light Fight is coming up December, uh, first three, first three weekends of December, starting on December third. Um, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights, from five to nine each night. Uh, get your applicant, or your, not your applications, your entries in by November thirtieth. I will be sending home, if you have a child in school, though, the appo- the forms will go in backpacks, probably, hopefully this week. Um, if I can have enough time to make copies, so, yeah, if not, if you don't, you know, know where to get the entry form, they are on the town website under special events, right under Light Fight, and you can print out your own. And if you can't, then you just email me and I'll send you one. I got, don't worry, I'll help you. Uh, but other than that, so Light Fight's usually pretty good and pretty big, and we just keep getting momentum with that, so hopefully it'll be another big year.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I got for right now.
Sounds good, thank you. So next item is minutes and consent agenda, so we've got a couple minutes on there, um, October fourth and eighteenth. Um, um, are there any holds on that? No, okay. Uh, we have permits, the approval of the liquor licensing again, uh, for Hub One Stop, the Hub Market, and Rietta and Peaceful Acres. Any holds on that? Home. And then the encroachment license, um, which the intention is to vote to accept the agreement. Is there any holds on that? No, okay.
I'll make a motion that uh by unanimous consent, accept the agenda, the items as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Uh, thank you, all five of us are here.
Sure.
Still had to check to see if Heather was here again.
I signed one.
I've got a lot of things.
Yep.
Um, okay, so we'll have some sign come across. What do we?
I'll let you know.
That's one stack.
I think we'll know.
This is one stack, those all go together. I'll give you a stack at a time. Okay, I don't know where to sign that one.
So this is the last one on that stack?
Uh, yes, that's that first stack. This is the second stack. God, my signature gets worse every time.
We're gonna sign on this, before, we're gonna sign on these first before we get to Destiny.
Yeah, that's fine, have at it.
Okay, this, this is.
That's one stack.
Okay.
Yep, I'm handing you stack at a time. There's like two for each, so. This is that first one, that ha- that first one had three. I only have one. I only have one. I don't see a. You write your name to me. It's this big scribble, come on. Alright.
Not gonna change them now.
I know.
I'm not a doctor.
Neither am I.
I want people to read it.
Either or, it doesn't matter. Just pick a stack. That one's only got one.
Just one. Okay.
That one's got two. And then this is your last paper right there, sir. Yep.
Just one?
Yep. Encroachment.
Nope.
So that's three down.
Do what?
For the encroachments.
How?
I'm counting as we go. We're on three. Oh, I know we will.
Donated, are they donated?
Uh, that one, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If they're coming through real quick there, usually, why, whatever, you know, come with it.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to uh new business. Um, A, which is the gold award product, uh, project for for Destiny Young. Um.
I didn't go set that up.
You wanna come on up? Hi?
Hi.
If you could just introduce yourself and and um, and where you live, and then we'll get into it.
I'm Destiny Young, I'm her kid down there. I live on Ragged Hill. Um, I'm here for my gold award. Uh, I'm working on a art installation. I've seen them on Chronicle and I thought it was a good idea for a gold award. And I'm gonna pass around what I have for a basic idea of what I have. It's gonna be like a fairy garden, but on a bigger scale. So the biggest item is gonna be three feet. And there's gonna be um, a fairy house made out of elements from the woods, like bark and twigs and stuff. And there's also gonna be concrete mushrooms that's gonna have rebar in them to keep them sturdy when I put them in the ground. And I will also be planting some obviously outdoor plants like hostas, Lily of the Valley, depending on the light that the area gets and the soil. Cause I wanna make sure they live. Um, I came to you guys because first I went to Open Space.
Of course, of course.
I was originally gonna put it on Malone Road at the intersection where between the pines and Dotty Wa- Dotty Rock Trail meet up. And there is a few restrictions and I could only have it there for a year. I intend for this project to have five to ten years at least.
Yep, this tree's my kid, I hope I saw it.
And Malone Road just wouldn't let me do that with the amount of restrictions. So the trail going to the Hobbit House at the end of Parsons Road was a good opportunity. There is a section of town-owned land that Open Space went out and marked a trail. You can go out there, there's little blue tassels marking it right now. Um, if this gets approved, they will, they're willing to clear the trail, so I can put my art installation there.
Great.
And it's about a forty-five minute hike doing the whole loop. And it'd be a nice field trip for like Hubbardston Center School, cause it's close by. And it'd also be an opportunity to bring more people into town, cause I've seen an episode of Chronicle that has had a few different art installations. I think they've had at least two episodes about them. And they're pretty cool and they've been very popular and brought in a lot of people to the towns that they were in. And I think that'd be good, cause we'd get more money coming into the town, cause if somebody stops to get gas or something.
Yes, well coached. Um, hey, so, so does this, um, so this is for the scouts?
Yes.
So does it, is it something that that you get approved by, you know, and then you you find a spot like this, or how's that all work?
Um, I decided to go through Open Space and now the town because I'm doing that first because the Girl Scouts is a bit difficult. And I wanna make sure it's approved through the town to make sure I can actually do it.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of the Girl Scouts turning me down because they don't know if I'm able to do it.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense?
Well thought out, yep.
And then do you have some sort of, um, you know, what would, what what, what's your timeframe? Like, what do you wanna do?
Um, I have, I think at least at most two years to get this done. I've been working on it for a year now, about. And it's, I've been doing a lot of research about plants that will
Oh, she's almost sixty.
That will match up with the the light requirements and the soil.
Uh, well, this looks great, um, well presented, good job. Um, I I've taken that hike many times too, going to the Hobbit House, cause it's the coolest place to bring kids.
Hmm.
They just are so freaked out and, um, by what's going on and who used to live out there, so having this sort of on the way is a really good idea, you know? Um, um, uh, yeah, so I don't know, anyone have any, any questions?
I do.
Thanks.
Great.
Destiny, so I actually have my gold award. So I understand and remember how much work it was, and this is awesome that you're taking this on and leaving something behind. Couple follow-up questions for you. Have you given some thought to if it's going to require any maintenance once you put it in and how that would work?
It will require maintenance over time. If stuff gets broken and it causes a safety issue, I will remove it. I will go up and check on it, probably at least once a year, at least. Um, I don't want kids getting hurt on it, especially with concrete, that's not gonna be fun. Um, but I will do maintenance on it and keep it going.
So one thing you may wanna think about is seeing if you can work with the other local Girl Scout troops who are a little bit younger than you and see if it's something that the community, Girl Scout community'd be willing to take on, because at some point, Destiny, in the next ten years, I'm guessing you're gonna say, I'm gonna go to college, I'm gonna go out somewhere, what have you, so you don't, you don't wanna always have to be tied to maintain it. You wanna make sure you have a plan that supersedes you, so that it continues beyond that, that way it stays, it's always.
Yeah.
And I know you had mentioned that, you know, you thought it'd be a great attraction for people to come and see. Do you have any thoughts about how we could do a good job of promoting it, making sure people knew about it, other than, you know, local school system? I think that's gonna be easy.
Um, I think social media is a good part. Um, I could create an account for it, but it probably wouldn't be that active. Cause it's only one location right now.
Okay.
And I do hope in the future that I can do a couple more locations, either somewhere else or along the same trail.
Hubbardston Celebration on Facebook, I heard, has like twenty-five hundred, like, or twenty-five, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I heard something about that.
Actually, I think we're almost like three thousand, I think, so.
Oh, three thousand, right, sorry, but yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Got there.
And then my last question is, have you given, I know you're, you haven't gotten t- uh, before the council, you have to present. But have you given some thought to where you're gonna be getting your materials from, or if you need any volunteers to help you?
Um, I haven't really thought about that yet, cause I'm getting permissions.
Okay. Okay.
And it's a huge loop to get through.
It is. Alright, well, best of luck.
Okay, anyone else have any more questions? Okay, um, so what sort of action do we think we need here?
If it's state, uh, if it's a town-owned property, just permission to uh make the installation.
Okay, so is there anyone else in the town? So, Open Space, um, so that that's who, Open Space, who you've gone to, right? You said that, so is there any other?
Hmm.
Well, Dan, I'm, I'm here representing Open Space, just to uh.
Are you here to shoot this down?
No, already did.
It's good.
No, we're, uh, we did volunteer to Destiny our help in creating or maintaining the trail that made it more easily accessible to people that wanted to visit, um.
Thank you.
You know, she, she brought it to Open Space first, the project, and um, it's very creative. Um, it's well thought out. She had some good points and we went back and forth with her on it. And uh, at the point where we th- we felt that was, we were thinking of it in terms of a temporary, more of a temporary installation. Uh, and uh, Destiny advised us that the Girl Scouts wouldn't allow that such a short-term project. And one of the members of our committee had researched that piece of property as a possible, uh, a possible site. So we visited it with Destiny, um, we came before last and uh, found, found a couple of spots at least. I think Destiny's gonna do some more looking there to see what makes sense from the standpoint of what plans she wants to put there and and access to it, so. But I just wanted to, to say for the Open Space Committee that we are willing to create the trail or, uh, part of it is already exists. There's trails on the property already, but to add to that or maintain them is necessary to uh make it accessible.
When you say the the Girl Scouts wouldn't allow a limited time period, so are they expecting this to be permanent then?
Um, not necessarily permanent, but it has to consist of so many years and one.
Did they give you a number? I'm just curious, but that kind of.
I'm not sure, but I.
There's not a, there's not a set number, but it needs to be something that kinda goes beyond you. You know what I mean? Like a give back to the community.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great that you guys are gonna help out on that.
So anyway, finishing that thought, no other boards or committees that that would need to have any, but.
I can't think of any.
Yeah, I can't either, I'm just bringing it up, so. Um, so, okay, so any, uh, it's been brought to us now, I suppose, for, yes, sir?
Um, I'm Tim Hall, I'm Mount Jefferson. I just, I'm on the Open Space Committee, so I went on the walk that uh Mark Kresge led to show us all the the site that he'd identified there, and uh, I I think it's a great site. Uh, Destiny has put a lot of work in. I've reviewed all of the plans that she's proposed, uh, putting out there, and she has a, she has a great list from ferns and Lily of the Valley to yellow clintonia and flocks, um, all native species. Um, she's put a lot of thought into figuring out which ones will grow in in the type of uh conditions we have out there. It's a lot of shade, but it's the site is, it's almost magical because it, not only the Hobbit House, but it, when you walk out there, you're, you've got uh wet ones um on both sides of the property kinda, so it's it, it really feels like it's kinda separate and a a good, a great place for for this kind of project where um, people are thinking about ferrying and things like that.
You got a lot of friends on your side, well done. Uh, okay, any, anything further from anybody?
Do we just give permission or do we need a motion?
Yeah, I think we should give a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we as a board in the town, uh, grant permission to Destiny Young for her gold award project.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just one question. David, does it make sense to have a letter come from you on behalf of the board to Destiny, so she has his backup when she applies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you think we need a co-signer from the Open Space Committee on that? Or?
I don't think it will hurt.
It wouldn't hurt, why don't we, you know?
Be glad to, alright.
Okay, alright, thanks. So you draft that up, David?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's good. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm abstaining. She's my kid.
Well done.
Okay, so yes, uh, opposed, abstain?
Well done.
Me neither.
Okay, so we got four.
Yep.
And one abstention. Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Good luck.
After she gets to Destiny.
Destiny, well, well.
First for coming, guys.
Yeah.
Yes, you are.
You've put time on it.
Thank you. There you go.
Thank you for coming into here.
Thank you.
Alright, Al, let's follow that.
Yeah.
Okay, so next item, um, would be new business, item B, which is the proposed zoning amendment for annual town meeting. You wanna come on up or stay right there, whatever you want?
Well. Uh, I guess I could stay here, right?
Sounds good.
Um, I have my, my friend Christopher from the planning board as well. So, I, I'm not, it's not quite clear to me, I guess I should've talked to David a little bit earlier. Um, there is this proposal to, to amend the penalty section. So that's one, one article we'd want, that's been suggested. You suggested it to us in a letter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so presently, uh, the bylaw provides for a fine of fifty bucks a day for a violation. So you could conceive of a situation where if you were, say, running a used car lot on in a residential section on sixty-eight, which we all know exists, right? That maybe it would be worth your time to pay the fifteen hundred a month penalty rather than find a new spot. You know, I mean, that that exists, so we're sort of sympathetic that if we amended this and had it go fifty bucks the first violation, a hundred and fifty the second, three hundred the third with notices, and and then that continues. It might be deterrents, it might also make it worth the, you know, help offset the legal fees for taking some of these people to court.
Mm-hmm.
But there was a consensus, and uh, if you wanna allow Christopher to speak to this too, that it, it isn't, it, it isn't uh where the enforcement breaks down, really. You know, it's like, if you increase, double the fine for speeding tickets, but you had nobody patrolling the streets, it's not gonna make a difference what the fine is. So we do have that sort of feeling about it. We're happy to go along with it, we think it's a step in the right direction. Uh, this is way wildly out of date. It dates back to like at least twenty years. Um, but we don't think it's gonna solve the problems of enforcement in this town, so.
When you say it's out of date, you mean the bylaw itself?
Yes, the fifty dollars. And that was true when we redid all of our, all of our fee structure for planning, the planning board a couple years ago, they all dated from about two thousand as well.
Okay.
So this is probably not even inflation, or or maybe inflation, but it's certainly not out of line. We're happy to sponsor it. Um, it's a, um, and put it on the warrant, just the way you've written it, uh, but, but there is that caveat. Is that gonna solve the problem?
It's true, I mean, before your time, so seven or eight years ago, we we had what we called the junk bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So there was an ad hoc committee comprised of two members of the select board, two members of the planning board at the time, and I think, uh, ex officio member, the town administrator was part of it at the time, whichever it was, and. And, um, a lot of work went into that, uh, going on to, you know, what the, it was gonna state and what the penalties were and how it was gonna be enforced and all that. And it was soundly defeated at town meeting. Because people didn't wanna be told what to do, so it was a little different, so I'm just giving you a little bit more history on the topic, uh, that we're talking about here, so. Um, and and a lot of it came in over the the time since then on how to enforce things, because we didn't have, um, the mechanisms to be able to do that either, which is what you're talking about, cause we just you know, why why change a bylaw, why make a bylaw if if no one has any intention of really being able to do anything about it, so I fully understand what you're saying there. I still think that the only way we're gonna ever ever get to the point where we're doing it is to take the steps necessary, some steps, whatever order they're in, even if they're out of order, which I kinda think this is, but still, it's a step that's gonna have to get done eventually, so still kind of in favor of moving forward with all of this, go ahead Chris.
Well, there were, there were a couple other concerns that came up on the planning board. Uh, I think the biggest one being, we have a lot of work we're currently doing and, um, and almost all of that is in response to either direct requests from the community, from the E D C, from the business community. Um, and there's, there's live controversies down the road for all of them. Whereas, we have this and we're we're looking at, well, where should this fall in the order of the things that we're working on? We haven't issued a violation in years, so, uh, the idea that we have to increase our second and third levels when we haven't issued a first level in years is gonna be tough to present at town meeting. Because even when we were just going through with, uh, the zoning bylaw, uh, at the last annual town meeting, there were objections from the room, like, why are we doing this, we have no enforcement? What's gonna be done about this? We're gonna have those same issues come up, and the the stuff that we're looking at are are things that really have long lasting impact on the town and things that that if anything bring the Z E O more into the fold of what's happening with the town. Like, um, for example, we're looking at, um, an agricultural accessory use bylaw with the E D C. Uh, and out of the the samples we've looked at, the Z E O becomes the gatekeeper of like those first level of accessory uses. So, we're gonna take a position that isn't working out great for us now and put it into a place where where it's going to become kind of the linchpin of what goes on with that law. And and similar things with the work we're doing related to accessory uses of of houses, um. There's, uh, uh, marijuana revision, um.
That was about battery energy storage system.
Yeah, the battery energy storage, um, uh, large scale, uh, solar photovoltaic.
System, the solar bylaw we're preventing.
And and all of these things have elements where the Z E O is key. So when when this came to us, uh, with the list of stuff that we currently have going, it looked a lot like a Band-Aid on a broken arm, and I understand, uh, what the select board's saying that look, we need to take steps to resolve this, we need to take steps to move this forward. Uh, but but we have some things that are very important to the town moving forward that also need to happen. So if this was something that came along with kind of, um, a comprehensive approach to how we're gonna look at things differently in the future, uh, I think I would be very much in support of putting it forward, but I'm really hesitant to to vote it forward from the planning board with, um, without it being part of a larger plan on how we're gonna fix things to take care of these bigger issues.
So we've come up with that plan that hasn't, um, come to fruition, so there was a agreement we had with the city of Gardner about, because we couldn't hold hearings, if you're gonna issue a citation, you need to be able to hold hearings so that somebody can, you know, go and have a hearing about their citation. And we don't have the capacity to be able to do that here, so we made an agreement a few years ago with the city of Gardner to use their hearing officer, but then questions came up about a number of things, including like, you know, how to schedule the hearings, transportation to the hearings, all these sorts of different things. Became very difficult, um, and so it didn't quite go as far there, and then, as you know, we have turnover and everything, and so things just sort of fall around the wayside, so I wish that we could make it, um, comprehensive all at once, I don't know that that's ever gonna happen though. That we're gonna be able to have the capacity to make all of those things on a very complicated issue, which doesn't seem complicated, but we we know, cause we've tried to chip away at it over the years. And so that's sort of why I I led with the going out of order thing, which 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 yes, this may not do much right off the bat, but to have it in place checks a box so that when we get to where we ultimately wanna get to, we don't have to redo this as well. So I think that was just, you know, the thought process anyway in some of it, so anyway, just some more history on that.
Can I, uh, just talk about, cause this this has been frustrating. And you really waste a lot of board time when you have somebody like the Mister Dakota, he came in and wasted, you know, hours of this time, hours of that time, hours of the meeting with I mean, there is really, there's really a need for an enforcement, it's just wasting all of our time. And I think people are entitled to, you know, we call, what do they call in the law, it's called peaceful enjoyment of your home? If somebody's got dogs that are barking next door, it should be fair, and they will have five of them, it should be fairly straightforward, that you can send somebody out there and you know, it's a, it's a major breakdown here. And I think, um, I think K P Law set forms to that one we, I don't know whether, were you leaning on that, or maybe that was back with Ryan?
I think this was Ryan.
Um, to how to organize, you know, a straightforward set of documents, um, where they, how we issue it, how to do it. Uh, this was regarding the car car lot on sixty eight, and it just y- you know, we do need a better effort, we need somebody that'll not only go, that'll address, that'll address these things so people don't blow up and come and waste twenty minutes of our time and twenty minutes of your time complaining in public, they can write a letter and we can refer it. And that officer goes out and confirms it or doesn't, you know, and then a series of letters and a process. So I think that it is worth putting that process together.
But to another point and going back to when Dan was saying that, when that first came up years ago, I can remember, you know, the the split was, the reason we discussed it years ago is because a lot of people were complaining uh, that, hey, there's no enforcement of these things that are going on.
Right.
And then part of the discussion at that time was, all right, enforcement, but we gotta come up with an incentive to make them info- recognize the enforcement, which is where the kind of, uh, s- small amount was mentioned. And of course, as Dan pointed out, it didn't get through town, town meeting at all, and listening to everything you're saying, Chris, and everything else, make, I'm thinking about the same thing, we have a group, if you will, who will be, are always gonna be complaining, this not, the enforcement's not happening, whether it's to, they're talking about somebody else who may be breaking the rule. We want enforcement, and then the same thing that came up at the last town meeting, people don't wanna be told to what to do. So it's like a catch twenty two, cause I totally agree with both of you, I think something we we need to do, but this is historical, at least as long as I've been on the board and living in the town. It's historical in the sense we've never enforced anything.
But why do we need what town meeting involvement, I mean, yes, yes, you do to increase the penalties, I get that.
And that's playing against us.
But why would, you don't need, aside from that, another bylaw, you need a process, not a bylaw.
Right, so the 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 previous bylaw, that was a bylaw to more define things and say what what's okay, what's not okay. This this is currently how it's written, this is how we want it to be written, so there was some more restrictions put in there, and that was defeated. Okay, so that that was part of that, so that that was an idea because we, I think at the time felt it was, um, it needed some some more um, uh, terms in it that made it, yeah, that made it, made it more restrictive so that, you know, it was worth it, I guess.
Iron it out.
I I can't remember all the details to that, but that was why, why that sort of came, but when, you know, when Larry was, you know, we did some enforcement, you know, when when we had to make triple A auto, um, you know, come into, um, uh, compliance with their permit, you know, there was the discussion of of
How many cars?
the back calculations of all the enforcement days that was gonna be on there and kind of the negotiation of, okay, you have until this amount of time to clean up, or you're paying this thing, so it was, you know, there's been some use of it, and you know, I think a lot of it has to do with who our o- enforcement officer is as well, and some of that came up earlier in our meeting about whether we have the the right, um, people in place or the right, uh, 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 agreement in place for that too, so. It's it's just such a tough one in a small town like us.
Yeah, it's not an easy.
Well, it's not, that one on sixty eight is, in my opinion, cut and dried, wrong.
Yeah.
It's just, I've been up there, I've been dragged up there like four or five times because my aunt owns the solar panels in back.
Okay.
And they had a full on roll off dumpster on her property, a pile of junk. They broke through the stone wall, like literally, it's a boundary, you can't move the stone wall, they did. You know, they're driving four wheelers all up there, but that's like, my aunt's not, she wasn't mad about that, it was the absolute not only put a dumpster on her property, but throw all the junk on her yard. And then you can see they were burning trash in the back, there was trash everywhere, there's like eight hundred vehicles on the property. It's all wrong, there's no right on that property, you know? There's nothing left that's right on that property. And to just never get an answer.
Yeah.
There's nothing, it's it's fine, it's fine, it's not fine, it's not fine.
You just need a process, you need somebody that'll go out, that'll inspect it, you need the form letters, they need to be sent, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, David.
So just, uh, just to give some context to, uh, my motivation for writing this up. Um, I did sit down with the building inspector and said, so why why is enforcement so hard? And he gave me a list of things that were wrong that, uh, needed to be corrected, most of them turned out to be red herrings. Um, but the one thing that he did point to that I can agree to is that you have a fifty dollar a day fine for zoning violations. And it's, usually you wanna have some sort of graduated uh, violation, uh, um, amount, so that if somebody accidentally, uh, violates the zoning unintentionally, um, you can either waive the fee or it's the minor minimum, uh, uh, cost to them. And three hundred dollars is the maximum that you can charge under, under Mass General law. So, here's something that, uh, was, I was told that was deficient, made a correction. I'm happy to be flexible on the the amounts of money, we can, we can do this as a graduated one or as a, uh, or as just one lump sum. But fifty dollars doesn't usually cut it.
Yeah, I think it's process here.
Come, s- annual town meeting's on June seventh, at that time you'll be a couple days away from the expiration of your um, agreement with Gardner. You'll have to have something in place, and that something in place will definitely have to deal with, uh, the the lack of, uh, service.
Chris, you still wanna say something? I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I, I think one of the the places where, and not even as a member, uh, of the planning board, but but just as a taxpayer that I find offensive, is that here is a contract that we made with Gardner. And Gardner hasn't been living up to their end of it, and their response has been, well, we haven't done it for the last two years because of this. That's not a good business partnership, that's not a good government relationship, a- and it shows that it is just so fundamentally broken. Uh, the other thing that that is an issue is, yes, we need more enforcement, but the reason that we're looking at some of these other bylaws, like the agricultural accessory use, is because there are farms in this town that are wildly out of compliance, but they should be in compliance, it's us who are behind with the laws. So by making these agricultural accessory uses permissible, that should also help the enforcement framework, because then you don't have this whole class of businesses that are out there just violating the bylaws as they are, so i- in one hand, it's, yes, we definitely need more enforcement, but we also need to make sure we're put in the right framework that's gonna exist for this to move forward and encourage more healthy enforcement that's good for the town.
So you're suggesting we're putting the cart before the horse?
Yeah, possibly, um, depending upon where the priorities are.
Mm-hmm.
We, I had a inquiry this this week for somebody that would put up a brewery tomorrow, if we would allow it.
Yep.
When you're gonna do the farm bylaw? I'd have another inquiry, somebody that actually has a option to buy, a a vacant farm with it, it's, you know, they don't have to clear cut it, that would hold in a, a tier ten marijuana field that's nowhere near where anybody lives, it's a huge wet lawn on one side and and, uh, both of these are stopped right now, you know?
I've, I sit on the E D C, I totally agree.
And the question is, do we go further because if you if you don't have anybody to issue the permits and ride herd on the situation, plus it's a very difficult thing to draft.
I totally hear it.
And we really need more expertise on the planning board, the access to more expertise, to get some of these things drafted. So I don't know, I mean, I I do think the penalties is, are reasonable, I'll support it, I don't know what the board will, you know, we have to vote. Um, and you're welcome to come to our board, but I think it's a small piece of the bigger puzzle here.
I agree.
If if we put it on the town meeting and we don't have some kind of solution that's happening to that agreement at that same time to talk about, it's gonna burn up a lot of political capital. And it's it's really gonna hurt all of these other initiatives that are really important to the town.
I think that's a little dramatic, I don't think it'll do that, uh, I don't want it to get to a point where it's it's standalone without a plan, but I I do think, um, I I do think that, um, i- it's, it's been in people's minds long enough, and I think we've talked about it enough to know that people know that we're we're serious about wanting a change, um, and that we're just not throwing it out there to take a spot up on the warrant, you know, so. But no, I I mean, I appreciate the candor, you guys, you know, as far as, you know, being, you know, very, very honest about, you know, your feelings here, but, um. Okay, well, anyone else from the board here?
I just, something quick, Dan, so I was just, you know, we heard from Ed earlier, you know, we keep having conversations about contracts with Gardner and keep the building commissioner piece, I think has come up at almost every meeting for the past three or four months. I'm just wondering if this may be a good opportunity for, especially as David said, the contract's expiring the end of June and if we're gonna do something different or fix anything, I think we need to get our acting gear and figure out what that's gonna be, does it make sense to try to do a joint meeting with the planning board and Mallory? And really sit down and kind of figure out, you know, what's been working, what's not been working, what do we need to address and even have David look at? You know, what are our other options? Is there any com- current communities we know Barry doesn't have the capacity that could share with us, or do we start looking and say, listen, we haven't fixed things in so many years, maybe we have to spend a little bit of money, hire a full-time building commissioner, get things squared away and fixed, and then start looking at things from there.
I I can't say no to that, we we've done all of those in the last few years, we've we've
Yep.
done, run the numbers on what that was gonna cost and, you know, before COVID, COVID kinda saved small towns for a little while here
with the funds that we had access to.
Couple years ago, we we couldn't even have that conversation, cause we were so close on hours to try to keep every, you know, literally wouldn't even have the conversation cause we couldn't, but, you know, rekindling it now isn't a bad idea, but we've we've, I think we've talked to all the local towns about, you know, what their capacity is for that sort of thing.
So then maybe we look at, you know, spending, you know, we have the money coming in from the community host agreements.
Yep.
Right, so maybe we start saying, okay, this is the perfect time, we have free cash, this is the time to say, you know, we need a three year trajectory of getting us back on gear, getting someone in play who, you know, some towns, some small towns, they do have a, their own full-time building commissioner. And their towns aren't much bigger than ours, and we're so far behind on enforcement, we're so far behind on having someone who's a full-time employee, who speaks the language to go and help the planning board and figure out what direction we're going in. You know, we want to promote businesses, we want people to come in, but at the same time, you know, like Ed said, how long has he waited to get a response on a question? Like, that's crazy. We just need to provide better service and sometimes you have to pay more to do that. So if we have to pay the full cost of a building commissioner for three years of, you know, seventy to eighty K, then we need to look at our numbers and figure out how we do that, because why pay anything if we're getting nothing? Right, why are we spending, how much do we spend now, David, on Gardner's service before we're supposed to split fees?
Twenty-five, I'm making numbers up, is that right?
Yeah.
I mean, that ballpark, I think.
So.
Twenty s- I think it's here, twenty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. So we pay close to thirty thousand dollars, and what are we getting out of it? Mallory gets a lot of headaches. Planning board doesn't get answers, the zoning enforcement officer doesn't come to meetings. We have residents who are extremely frustrated, businesses can't come in and they can't get things done. Like, w- why pay thirty thousand at all?
We shouldn't speak out of turn, but.
Please go.
I I, I think, I think Roland works hard. But I think there's a lot of building projects in town and a lot of things that need inspection, and if you think of it, every house that goes out. But I think there's a lot of building projects in town and a lot of things that need inspection and if you think of it, every house that goes out. Either he or his assistant, you know, has to come out multiple times, you know, the wiring, the plumbing, the this.
Mm-hmm.
And so when you're negotiating, you need to negotiate it, negotiate part of that salary X number of hours a week for enforcement. Uh, the to include the following, or s- or some, you know, it's it's always the last on the list of of, you know, enforcement.
But even before the enforcement pa- part, Alice, we even heard from Ed today, who said, even on something that wasn't an enforcement matter, it was weeks.
We have, but like it, he, oh, oh, I don't know, he said moving the shed, that would be enforcement, I don't know what else he was speaking of.
He was requesting. Well, I think he had just asked for, there was one thing that held him up on being able to sell property or buy property. And it took him three weeks to get something back after he submitted all of his plans and paperwork.
Yeah, I I would put that, we we do have that, uh, those issues for him, you know, can you certify this, that and the other thing? And they also go behind just the permitting, so I think he's pretty straight out, just on his, the permitting side of things.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I don't, that doesn't strike me as a lot of money, twenty-seven thousand dollars, how many houses have we had built? You divide it by that fee and it's, you know, probably works out to you paying him, I mean, suppo- yeah, you're collecting some fees too. And that maybe you have to look at too, does that actually cover the cost of an inspector, but.
They're certainly not an easy solution, uh, going to, what Heather was saying, I would somewhat agree with. Uh, following what she's suggesting, because I'm looking at the article pr- proposed. And with the timing being June seventh and the problem with the gardener, the contract ending, et cetera. These are questions, I think, would come from the town meeting with, on the article, that we would, and we would have no answers for. Which just weakens our position and our recommendation and it just make make the whole point moot.
Should we put it off to the fall meeting?
That's what I'm trying to, I'm not trying to minimize this problem, because I think it's definitely is a major one.
I think.
But I I think it'd be almost a failure, just waiting to happen because of the timing and everything else, so. Maybe this isn't the time to put it on the ti- next town meeting warrant, we need a little bit more.
Sure.
Research and all of this and thought on it, that would be my suggestion.
Well, even if it went on the fall town meeting, that would be a few months of.
Yeah, depending upon what we can find out and et cetera, at least be current in what we're trying to find out, as opposed to still dealing with things from the past. Because it's those same questions are gonna come up, but it would be embarrassing, I if at the meeting, if.
We can.
Somebody said, well, who's gonna be enforcing it and we would say, well, we just lost our guy in Gardner, et cetera, we don't really don't have anything in place. You know, I I just don't think that's the way to come back.
Yeah, I don't think we would put it on a town meeting in June unless we had a plan, so I I would fully agree with that.
Yeah.
So I think the plan is to have a plan, but if we don't have a plan, then then right, I agree.
Just if we, if we, if. Stuff comes to fruition, which I granted, I hope it does, this agri- uh agri- uh, the farm by law accessory use. And like a brewery came in and the winery was talking about they're interested in doing a tasting room next year. And we had another marijuana, that's a lot more on someone's plate. Like if there's those major businesses coming in, think about that, if if we're falling behind now. What will happen if just those three things came in?
We probably have to have our own guy.
I, that's what I'm saying, that's.
Yeah.
Go, sorry, Chris, go ahead, I'm done, you can speak.
I'm just stretching.
But I just, yeah.
Well, the the, we're not gonna figure it all out tonight, and I think we were here to discuss, um, you know. The proposed zoning amendment for annual town meeting, which I think we just collectively decided that that's not gonna happen for annual town meeting. So if if at at the minimum, it's pushed to the next meeting after that, uh, with with future discussion planned and, you know. Um, sometime in the next few months, um, maybe a joint meeting between our boards to to go through this a little bit more detailed, does that sound okay?
Sounds good, can I just before we let you move on your agenda, say, we are, we do hope to have at least something with the rate of development by law, which you realize we.
Of course.
We kicked for a year down the road.
Yep.
The more you analyze it, it's very, very housing unfriendly, the way it's written, so it will need, if we're gonna keep it at all. Uh, really a substantial rewrite, I think, um, so I probably will come back, I'm I'm working on it now, but for example. Um, there is no way, for example, four family units are allowed if it's not over an aquifer in this town, you got the right zoning. This file has been in effect twenty years and there is no way you could get a permit to do that, because you can't get more than a permit, a permit for more than two units. I mean, it's just, it doesn't, they don't exempt in-law apartments, somebody wants to put an in-law apartment in, ching, that's one of our, you know, units. And it's just out of whack, if you you allow twenty. Um, twenty-eight units a year and the most we've had is twelve units in the last since, um.
Two thousand.
Since two thousand, well, two thousand eleven, four new builds, seven, nine, twelve, eight, this is going up.
Ten years.
Eight, 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 six, twenty-twenty, we had six. So why do you have to have a law that says you can't build more than twenty-eight and then you're not gonna count in that?
Because of what happened in the past.
Yeah, this is a nineties problem you're trying to solve and.
I, wow, I'm, that's, that wa- it was huge, it was a massive problem.
I'm not saying it was a big problem, but it isn't our problem now. Uh, I'm not not saying we won't do it, we'll do it if it's makes people happy, but you should consider also the fact that you've lost.
No. But it could.
In two thousand five, you had four hundred and seventy-one kids in the center school, this year you got two hundred and forty-three.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's cause the kids are aging out and the seniors are staying put, you know, or adults, not necessarily seniors, but adults.
And and there is. Yes, and there's nowhere for the seniors to go, because there's no senior housing, there's a seven-year waiting listed.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And there's no, no way you can build affordable housing in this town. With the two acre lot and the two hundred foot frontage and the no land available, we know that's the case. And you're not gonna let, and you're gonna say to people, you can't build a fourplex, because this wood doesn't allow it. And you can't, you can't build any kind of apartment building unless it's at least twenty-five percent dedicated S H I units, which is not what builders do. You can't get more than two units permitted by from one builder a year, so that rules out subdivisions. With A and Rs, you can't get more than two houses a year, so if somebody had a big frontage on the street that would accommodate six houses, which would help with the housing problem. They they would only be able to do three houses and counting the one they have, they would have to spread it out over years, right? So it isn't accomplishing what you thought it would accomplish, I think.
I, well, I was a kid, like when I I grew up in the nineties and the bus. It, the whole school blew up and we had the split sessions and it was insane. I started out like as a kid with like, yeah, there was like nobody on the bus and it was great. And then by like sixth grade, it was pretty much jam-packed, by high school, we couldn't even all fit in the same damn school. You know, at the at the same time, it just wasn't gonna happen. Um, the town totally, not only our town exploded, but a few of the others, the thing is, is right now. That is in place, um, I, what I hear is, we don't wanna become Rutland with the explosion. That is the fear, that it will come back and if you don't have anything in place, what's happening in Rutland will happen here. And then we screw ourselves, because it's like, it's like there's any little acreage of spot, they're just jamming houses in, jamming houses and jamming houses it. And that's not what most residents want.
Yeah, but you gotta think, we've got a two acre minimum lot.
Mm-hmm.
With two hundred feet of.
True, and I, there are some.
The maximum build out, in the master plan, if you build every single available spot like that would be six hundred houses, that's what's left.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
In town, in space, that's available.
If you let them do it.
From MRPC.
Probably would try, like, you, if builders.
That counts the gravel pits, that counts everything.
Well, I'm just saying.
So, I guess the question is, um, it's it it's probably, we'll work on it if you want. I think it's, it's not working, I think it's very housing unfriendly at the moment, particularly for, um, young families. You've got a very, you get a very unfor- unaffordable housing structure. Um. So anyway, work on that, we do have, I'm trying to work on in-law apartment, our present in-law apartment says in-law accessory. The thing is to combine them now, but right now, our in-law apartment says, the person has to be related to you. People that live in houses together aren't even related anymore, but the in-law, you can't put an in-law unless that's your in-law, basically. Somebody that's related, couldn't be caregiver, couldn't be a foster kid, couldn't be your kid, you know? And the accessory by law, if you wanna put an accessory on, which is an addition, as opposed to building within your house, putting an addition on. Your house has to have existed at least five years before you can consider it. Yeah, so we think that needs work, so we're gonna try to tackle those two issues, but if the mindset is still really. To disfavor all of these housing initiatives, I mean. You know, I mean, that's a, that's a choice the town makes, but it does have an impact on how many young families are here, on the age structure of the town.
In the same sense, at least in my opinion, the town can't just stand still either, it's it's not getting cheaper around the town, it's getting more expensive. And we know we're hard up for money because revenue, we don't have much, so.
But you don't wanna be in the situation of Braintree, where they were so restrictive, that they're down to kindergarten through two. And we've already lost our sixth grade here, probably because we couldn't afford the science curriculums, my guess, I don't know if all.
No, all the sixth graders went up with covid, they had this, they had this literally separate the two classrooms.
Was that a recent?
Like, so every classroom that was there had to turn into two. So in order to fit kids back in this school, they, at any other school, they took all the sixth grades and just.
But the district was looking into that for years before, and it became a pretty good reason to be able to do it.
Yeah, creating a middle school.
Probably, oh, yeah, cause of middle, yeah.
Middle school, yeah, yeah.
One of the things, um, I have done, mostly in. Reference to the lot fifty-seven and senior housing, which is really critically short with the seven-year waiting list of Hubbardston House. Is, um, talked to Chappa, where I wrote a a grant at Bill Murray's suggestion, to come and have somebody talk to you about. Affordable housing, what what it really means and what the real issues are and the repercussions of not addressing the issue. Um, I don't know whether we'll get it, but but at that also, this is like opening Pandora's box, I won't work on either of those bylaws too, but. I really see as a planner, real problems with the rate of development by law and the in-law and accessory bylaws, they are wildly unfriendly. To the housing needs that today.
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't make them friendlier, they don't have to go away, and we had that seven or eight years ago.
Yeah, no, the, I, I, yeah.
In the seniors center, that person came in and spoke to us.
Yep.
And it.
About affordable.
Uh, just about affordable housing, what you just talked about.
And what happened, was it badly received?
No, wasn't badly received, it was, it just.
Nothing changed.
Nothing changed, well, there was a different planning board.
All right, well, you have other things to do, but I will plan to get you drafts of those and we're happy to come and meet with you to to consider them.
Yep.
Y- All right, sounds good, we we we'll set that up, um, and fill out some some dates out to you guys and see what works for you.
And we're thinking that we're not gonna get to farm accessory, solar and marijuana this year by June.
Yeah.
Really. Then they all need redoing and they all have people on the wings that wanna come in, they write to me all the time.
Hmm. Yeah, you've copied me on some of those and they seem eager, they just, there's no way in.
It's just, um, we can hire outside people to help draft these things and have hearings and it's a possibility.
Yep. But. Okay.
Well, just, that's a lot of business to lose with the farms.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, but it'll lose any.
It's a lot of business to lose with the farms, that's all, I just, the potential is so there.
Does it make sense, Dan, if we're looking at doing a meeting with the planning board to talk about building in general, that we just do a general meeting with them to talk about? All of these things and potentially, you know, what the cost of having a consultant come in to help them with stuff and seeing if we have the funds to be able to make that happen?
You mean outside of a a board meeting?
Well, to do a joint, um, select board and planning board meeting to talk about all planning issues.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay.
Yep.
To include even potentially, you know, getting a consultant for the planning board, so can move those things.
Sure, yes.
Basically a round table type thing, just, you know, throwing out things in here and there.
Yeah.
We'll coming up with a plan and see if we can get both boards on the same page, I think will be helpful, I'm sure it'll be helpful for the planning board to know where we stand.
Yep.
Well, we're open.
Okay.
But, no, thanks for listening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next item is is, um, goals and objectives, so David, you you talked to to Ryan, you said?
I did.
And we have in our packet, um, dated November first.
Yep.
Um, some some recommended goals. So, uh, I guess I'll just go through them, um, we've had a little bit of time, everyone's had a chance probably to to take a look at these anyway, whether we wanna. Accept them or or add to them or take no action on them tonight, might as well, I pushed it off last time, cause we had a bunch of stuff to talk about and wanted to give us a little time to think about these goals, but. I'm gonna go through them one by one, um, there aren't two too many of them, so, um, I won't read them verbatim, but I'll I'll go through the gist of what they are, the first is, um. There shall be no general proposition proposition two and a half override, I I'm not gonna, um, even though I'm commenting on each of them right now, by commenting on the first, I'm not planning to go through these and comment on them, I'm just. Reading them to start, uh, feel free, anybody to stop me at any time. Um, number two is that the budgets shall provide level services where possible, uh, allowing for higher increases in non-discretionary budgets. For public safety and public works, level services include the enhanced staffing that was supported by the CARES Act funds. The additional funds will be provided by, uh, anticipated, um, marijuana income as per the two community host agreements already in place.
Question on that, Dan?
Sure.
So, David, have we seen or do we know when we're gonna see the first realization of the funds coming in from the community host agreements?
Yes, and that's on your agenda for a little bit later, but I, we can, we can talk about it now. We have two host community agreements, one for two, um, uh, organizations, Paper Crane LLC and then, um. Um, Royal Sun Farm LLC, Royal Sun Farm has no crop in the ground. Um, and so there's no percentage of of that s- of sales, there's no money to be had from them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Paper Crane is operating and we should be seeing a payment on December thirty-first.
Okay, and off the top of your head, do you happen to ever recall what that number looks?
It'd be a pro-rated portion of, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay. And then, is it, so having little experience with these community host agreements, but I know you've had more. Is it typical that, you know, once it starts coming in, then you can count on it every year?
Yeah, so, uh, the the, the people you need to convince are the people at the Department of Revenue, they're gonna say, what's your, what's your stream for of revenue for that year?
Okay.
Project that forward, they're not gonna allow you to project more than.
Okay.
Um, than what you brought in for the prior year, even though you can argue that, hey, this is only six months income. I can double that and be within the parameters, they won't accept that.
Okay, and then the sentence, the way it's written, saying, you know, for the public safety, public works, level services include enhanced staffing. That was previously supported by the CARES Act and that the additional funds will be provided by the anticipated marijuana income? What percentage of that community host agreement funding coming in are we looking that would support these additional level, enhanced levels?
Uh, you should be bringing in a pro- pro-rated portion of a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Paper Crane.
Okay.
I don't know what you're gonna get from Royal Sun.
Okay.
And then the question, oh, just to to restate that, you were wondering how much of that percentage would go towards that enhanced staffing?
Mm-hmm.
So basically, how much more did we spend on that enhanced staffing during, that was compensated through CARES Act? Would it be pulling out of the expected amount of money we're gonna be getting from those community post agreements, so, I don't know if you know those numbers off the top of your head, I I don't.
Yeah, so, to add add a another shift on the, uh, the night shift for the police department, it'd be about sixty thousand dollars.
Yep. Okay.
And what about the public works?
Public works, um, we're short-staffed as it is, we need, we need an extra body, um.
I I don't think there was much CARES Act enhanced staffing with Public Works, was there? Did we, did we pay for a bunch of extra?
I think you did.
Public Works? Uh, it's a good question, Heather, I I I will have to find that out, I don't I don't remember that being, um.
Okay.
Augmented much.
Okay, my concern is just, you know, I wanna make sure that we're not, you know, of the money we're counting on, we're not putting it all in one bucket and saying, okay, we're now tied up everything.
Yep.
Forget it, cause then you have the increases every year and so forth and.
So I think, I think part of this being a goal is for us to understand the numbers, which is what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent, that's all I have.
Okay, um, number three is the non-union and non-contracted employees will receive a three percent call-up commensurate with union employee increases.
So, question on that.
Yep.
So, usually, and I don't know when our CBA's currently expire, I'm assuming they're staggered, are they all the same time?
They're staggered, they've got the fire firefighters.
They're staggered.
We did contracts last year, yeah.
So, fire gets two percent, police is getting one percent, DPW three percent, how do we get to non-union? So fire gets two percent, police is getting one percent, DPW three percent. How do we get to non-union at three percent?
I don't think those are right.
Those those are twenty two uh fiscal year twenty two, so that's what you're currently paying. This is not projected forward.
Okay, so that's twenty two's numbers, but so we don't have what twenty three is?
Yeah. Right, cause that's what we're doing right now is we're trying to come up with that with that number.
Okay. Oh, okay, but do we have collective bargaining agreements that'll run into twenty three for those three groups?
Uh, yes.
Do we know what?
Two, two groups, for the police department and for DPW.
Okay, and do we know what the percentages are for twenty three?
Um I'll have to check.
Okay.
So so the, I I I think that's a um a lofty goal there myself to to non-contracted, non-union employees, three percent COLA, that that's that would be the highest in ten years.
Well, it's also just, it it just looks out of whack when you do two, one and three and you're wondering where the.
Yeah, see, so some of those agreements, which you, you know, weren't part of um.
The contracts.
W- w- right.
Yeah.
We 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 had uh different scales of what we agreed to for year one, year two and three and based on other compensation for longevity and whatever else. So
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I think taking it in a snapshot's hard, so I think, you know,
Yep.
further further um review is necessary into making making all of us understand the.
Also in trying to make ourselves more competitive with relating communities so that we keep the people we have. Cause we were behind in so many cases, so we're trying to get back up to where we could at least on par with them.
Totally.
That was one of the thoughts behind some of this.
So for next time, David, can we get twenty three's projected numbers of what we know?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, if you if you could, um because it'd be easy enough, just the 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 length of each of the agreements, if you could just what the percentage increases are for the three years for each of the three, just so we have that to to take a look at.
Yeah. It's no secret that the inflation has uh really taken the bite out of people's wallets.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep.
You know, so the social, I've never seen the social security COLA go that high to five point nine percent and it looks like that's not enough.
Yeah.
So, um.
That's crazy. Yeah, I mean, we gotta do what we gotta do, so I I do agree with that. Keeping keeping people.
They're your best resource.
Yep, um and, you know, Ryan and you know, obviously you're here now, but has worked extremely hard since he's been here to create an environment of inclusion and sort of wanting to be part of this, so.
Yep. Yep.
We need to be very mindful of that. Um, okay, uh the next one for which is to improve town regulatory efforts and customer service. The land use department shall be supported with a part-time clerk, so I think we talked a little bit about that tonight.
Just a question, is this, are we talking about Mallory?
Yes, sure.
Are we talking about in addition to, we're just talking about maintaining the current staff level we have?
Uh, two things, um Mallory is overworked.
Okay.
Um, and she is doubly overworked because we're not uh delivering the services that uh that twenty seven thousand dollars to Gardner is supposed to give us.
Mm-hmm.
So you've kinda got two problems there. One is you gotta step up the service, but you've also gotta take some pressure off of Mallory because she's spread too thin.
So this is a, this is for an additional position of another part-time clerk or half an FTE?
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, n- next goal, uh free cash will not be used for operating budgets, so this is, you know, I can't can't imagine who this came from, considering Ryan's been talking about this since the first day he walked in here, was
Mm-hmm.
getting away from doing that, knowing that we had to do it at the time. We we did get away from it this year and I think that the plan would be to um to to
Yep.
you know, have a goal of being able to avoid doing that because that's a a spiral uh that we don't wanna get into again.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
The six was uh in all areas of our control, government should be uh set on a sustainable course. This means at a minimum that existing financial management practices and policies will be followed. Um, once again, this is um something that that we've worked on for a number of years to establish financial management practices and actual policies, and we've been through dozens of policies to 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 refine them, to get them to a point where where there is, you know, um continuity, and so I think the point of this goal is to to stick with that. Um, number seven is prioritize road maintenance by committing to large and small repair projects as outlined in the fiscal year twenty one twenty five road maintenance plan. Continue to invest money into road repair when possible and communicate the status of plans to the public on a semi-annual basis.
Mm-hmm.
Self-explanatory, you know, um. Goal eight, uh continue to develop plan to replace, repair, restore municipal building space. Um, you know, absolutely, we tasked Ryan with with that as one of his primary things and 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 the um
Yes.
the capital planning committee as well to uh to take a look at, you know, what what
We've been talking about it since you and I have been on board, yeah.
what we wanted them to focus on. Yeah. Uh nine is work on sustainable options for seniors and senior center in a COVID nineteen environment and beyond. Find ways to provide services even with potential temporary closures. This was this was something sort of a carryover from last year and when when things were looking pretty bleak uh for, you know, them carrying on with the services that they normally provided. If you recall, there were pricing that went out there that that didn't get um authorized for for a patio and and some other things, so I I think this is just, you know, keeping it out there that you know, we all have it hard, but it gets real hard with the seniors who have limited ways to uh to interact and and um perform other sort of normal functions of life uh when when their avenues are 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 affected. Um.
Did we have increases in our expenses for the senior center last year as a result?
Hmm, I'm not aware of it. There there is a dis- ongoing discussion about uh some sort of patio.
Yeah, Claudia's been.
Yeah, that was like a singular.
Yeah.
She's been working on that and they they were raised, trying to get raising certain amounts of money, but I think back to, I was in your, I think you were
Yeah.
I was with you at the time. She came in at one point, we were discussing that because that was when we, she was curious about the money that we were beginning to get as a community from the, if some of that might be able to go in to something like that.
Yeah. Right.
We didn't know have any answers at that particular time, but I know that she brought that up.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't anticipate large with this, with item number nine, we're not saying we expect another ten thousand dollars to be accounted for in the budget, we're just simply
Yes, correct.
Providing written support.
Written support and if if we can find ways to pay for it through a a committee like an ARPA committee or something like that, that that, you know, that that's that's what we wanna look into, all those avenues.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay.
But one more point to that in terms of, I think you were asking the question, Heather, last year was unusual because of COVID nineteen for the senior center. It was basically closed and
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
the seniors couldn't come and um, so it skewed all the things that you're looking at in terms of what the senior center might need or not need.
Okay, um goal ten was build on an improved relationship with QRSD administration. Continue to work with other Quavon towns on the annual QRSD assessment process. Finalize a plan to approach QRSD early in the budget process establishing that each town can afford to contribute. I think I I um mentioned this probably to everybody here, uh 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 but we were in the process of doing this. Um, I had gone and met with with three of the four other select boards to talk about approaching the budget process early and how difficult it was to not have projections and numbers, blah blah blah. It was it was gaining some momentum. It was a pain, but it was gaining some momentum and then literally then COVID hit.
Yep.
A year and a half ago, and so the the final meeting, which was gonna be with um New Braintree, got pushed off and it sort of hasn't gotten there. And as I said about the town, QRSD got, you know, um saved, for lack of a better way to say it, with with CARES Act funds and whatever else because they didn't have to ask the towns for as much money this year and la- and last year and this year because of the funds that they received, but that's not gonna last forever, so
Mm-hmm.
keeping this on there was, you know, this was this was this was one of my big sort of goals um a few years ago and been working on it and we have an improved relationship with QRSD. I think we have a great relationship right now with with the way we worked with them on the um the school roof project. I mean, we couldn't have a better relationship as far as um common goals for that project, you know, specifically, so it's been cultured.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Um, anyway, that's that. Goal eleven, work with the economic development committee to use Route sixty eight north, south and town center projects as centerpieces to attract new small businesses to the improved Route sixty eight trunk corridor area.
Mm.
Right? Like, of course.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Um, you're our mouthpiece for that?
I, trust me. I'm a very loud mouthpiece and the EDC.
Uh, and then goal twelve on here is reach out as uh s- select board liaisons to other town committees and boards to share responsibility on what is going on, offer help and improve communication in implementing the overall master plan for the town. I think this 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 came fr- from from you last year.
Yes, yeah.
Um.
I just think, said it, I think reaching out with other boards and committees, we can't, I can't there can be no negative as long as it's, you know, I sit, I go to the the open space, I go to like all these other ones that I'm the liaison and I reach, I was like, I'm not here to impose, I'm just gonna sit here and quietly, you know, the same with the CIPC, I sit there quietly, like on the Zoom meetings and if they had a question, they would, you know, Katie, turn on your screen and be like, okay, you know, back when there was Zoom. And I went with a bunch of their meetings and stuff and I, it's not to impose, it's to just help them if possible, like what do you need, like what are you working on? And some of the open space has reached out to me about, this is what we are looking at doing, can you help us point us in the right direction with this? Can you do the, you know, and it's just simple things.
I did the same, you sort of inspired me to do a couple for, I saw ConsCon, I jumped on a couple ConsCon meetings, same sort of thing, same sort of sat in the background and
Yeah. 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 Yep, just sit there quietly.
um, and it's just, it's definitely um appreciated and helpful, you know, for the.
Yeah.
I also keep in touch with Claudia a lot.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just a bit.
But we have a list, we all have a little section, and if there's something that doesn't go with anything you're interested in, I don't care if we move them around or shift them or whatever, but you know, there's certain ones I love, like the EDC, cause I'll go back and forth with Whitney all day long. It's almost like a sparring match. We have fun together. You know, and the same with like the open space, they all, you know, pretty much would, you know, like me at this point, so, yeah, it's good. They've gotten used to me. Um, but yeah, it's, I just think it's, it's the same thing with like showing up at at like town events and things like that. It's like, no offense, we're elected officials, whether you agree with it or not, that's what we are. You should show up to town things, whether it's another meeting, whether it's field day, whether it's, you know, a harvest breakfast or whatever, if you can, you should show up because like Donnie Berthium and and Ann Goby show up at things, that they're elected officials. They try to show up and see what the town needs. That's what we are, we should show up. That's my belief, that's the whole part of what we do. If we don't show up to these things, how the hell do we know what's going on? How can we make decisions on what's going on?
Is it possible to get a list of the boarder selectmen liaisons whose liaison to what?
It should be in our.
It's a, it's on, it's on our.
Yeah, in our, in our, yeah, in our.
Is it? Was it assigned before I got on the board?
We, you had whatever um um
Pat.
Pat had, yeah.
Okay, so I should probably look at that list then, cause I wouldn't know that.
Yeah, you should probably look at that list. You already been assigned, so.
You know, that's our, I mean, usually we we do that early on in the year, so um.
Okay. Cause if I'm neglecting my duties, like, you know.
You're not, you're not, no, no, usually we do it, but we can, we had turnover and, you know, I'm sure Ryan, if you were here, would have been like, hey, it's this is the time when we gotta put these on there, so that, yeah, I
Okay.
our fault, but but yeah, there is a list.
In the Google Drive somewhere.
It should be.
Okay, I'll hunt it down.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll find it for you.
It is, no, it is definitely, I see her.
It's it's in the Google Drive, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I just, I wouldn't know, like, I'd go search for it, but it's in there, I know it, cause that's where I, yeah.
No, it's still there. It's still there.
Yep, okay. Alright, well, that concludes our our um
Your name isn't there, it's Pat.
Uh, or uh, our goals and objectives, so we have some options. Um, we can uh, we can, you know, I I think we we decided in the past that
Okay.
I'll look for that.
um, we like to uh, if we're at a point to accept them, we do like to make a motion to do that so that, you know, we know we've recognized that these are it just makes it a little bit more formalized. We don't have to do that, but that is uh something we've done in the past. Or we can, you know, say, you know what, we want some more time to think about this individually, delete some, add some or whatever else, so I'm, you know, whatever.
I'll put the motion forward and then we, if this is have a discussion, but uh that we accept the uh goals, the general goals for as presented to us.
I'll second them.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, I was wondering if we could possibly add a another goal and I'm not sure specifically what the wording should be, but something along the lines of working on um the building department for next year. So as we talked about earlier, we need to come up with a plan of whatever we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's reworking the agreement with Gardner, whether it's going out ourselves, whether it's working with another community, but we need to, I think, put that as a focal point of what can we do here for the building department?
Would you amend that motion to include that?
Yes, sure, that's a great suggestion, yeah.
Ending appropriate um wording of it?
Yes, absolutely.
And I will definitely second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
I guess the only other thing, Dan, my question B is, um, because we have specific numbers in like number three for the COLA commensurate with, you know, union employee increases and that's something we're not sure what the current numbers are. Is it possible to, you know, either hold on that one or put the COLA percentage for non-union employees on hold until we know what the other numbers are, so we're not voting on that?
Go ahead, David.
So on Wednesday, uh I'm gonna be sending out notices to all the departments that budgets are now it's budget season and that they're due on December twenty third back to me. I can give them a copy of the goals and objectives with this one item here, the COLA uh left blank and uh tell people, just put in what what you have for twenty two goes into twenty three and we'll figure out the COLA a little bit later.
You're talking about the five point nine?
No, no, the three percent.
No, I'm talking about the three.
Oh, the three percent for the, oh, okay, yeah, mhm.
Yeah.
And that way you can take t- take more time and decide what the COLA will be.
Okay, so I I I the 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 another amendment than Jeff would be to um to um, you know, keep keep uh goal three on there, but to not be specific about the percent COLA um increase at this time.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah.
I'll second it again.
Sounds good, okay. Any further discussion? No? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous? Okay, um, we have some new hires at the fire department. What do we got, Tony?
Phil, I don't know if it's Terry Petrow, junior call firefighter, part-time.
Yeah, I've heard, looked at all.
Brian Colwell. Call unqualified firefighter, or call firefighter, part-time and Michael Travis.
Yep. You're all on call.
I've seen those.
So here's a question. So we have with it the letter of the offer letter for both of them. So you have Brian's offer letter, who's coming on as a call firefighter EMT, and then you have um Phil's offer letter coming on as a call firefighter. But I'm confused because both letters say the position's classified as grade B step one. But grade B step one for Brian appears to be sixteen thirty seven and grade B step one appears to be fourteen eighty seven for Phil.
Because one is, one's the EMT.
He's an EMT.
But how are we using the same, are we using different class of comp charts? Because usually if you say grade B step one, it doesn't matter what position you're talking about, you're using the same chart. So is there possibly a mis-reference in the grade in the step? Or or do we have a different grade and step plan for different positions?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have, so we have one one grade and step plan.
Okay.
Alright, so that's, there must be a mis- mistake there.
Okay, cause I I read it three times and I was, I couldn't figure out how both are grade B step one, starting rate for one's fourteen eighty seven.
Well, could that be a negotiating thing, uh, and they applied for the job, that that's what it would get because of being an EMT?
Sixteen fifty. Not if it's a step, cause it's not a range. Sometimes you have a range, ten dollars to fifteen dollars, but this is step one.
No, it'd be a step.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Right.
Okay, you're good.
I
Hm?
I did invite the chief of fire to be with this meeting. He unfortunately is doing jury duty, so he wasn't able to be here.
Okay. Um, alright, well, we should probably get some clarification on that as far as is it grade B step two and grade B step one or whatever, it's gonna be, just just so we
Yeah, we'll, we'll clarify that issue.
we understand it, so, yep, this is.
So we won't act on them right now? I don't think there's much we have to do, I don't.
Does Michael have a letter, offer letter with this?
Hmm.
Cause he did it in the. I'm just wondering if it.
Well, well, there's one, like, we got three, so two of them we wouldn't need to hold on, but what's the third one?
So Michael's rate seems to follow the sixteen thirty seven, same as Brian's.
Mm-hmm.
Which which he's assuming he's got the EMT there on the first page, I think, right? Michael.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, he's got the EMT, so clearly there's a thought process here and it just looks like it's a misprint, so I, you know, um.
Mm-hmm. Well, should we put this off or can we? He needs them, he needs the people though too, right, so. We can't act upon it.
I'm I'm sure we we could, but what do we, what do we need to do, David?
Well, this is. Well, you've got a f- strong fire chief, so he can hire
That's what I mean, we don't have to actually do anything on this, so.
Yeah, you don't have, you have veto power.
Right.
So if we just get clarification on the grade and step?
Yeah, just make sure that he's being paid the right right amount and label that correctly.
Yes.
Yes, and I'm totally fine with whatever that amount is, I just
Yep. No, it's good.
want to know what B and one is.
Understood, catch. Okay, um and our uh our our last item here for new business is the is the triple A uh licensing.
I don't know, could Sandy explain that's the one with the uh taxes?
Yeah, so um we received an application for the class two l- uh auto dealership uh the property owed uh taxes, and so the tax collector has received payment, partial payment of the taxes, and has put together a uh payment plan uh with the the owner, so I think that they're ready to go.
Do we know how much is outstanding in taxes issue?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand?
Yeah, and they've paid five today.
And if the payment plan is followed, do we know when it will be complete?
It's, I think it's two or three months.
Okay.
Is that in there? Is this, is your payment plan in?
Yeah, yeah, to be paid on a payment plan of a thousand a month until paid in full.
Okay.
So
So the O twelve and the grade five.
Yeah, it shows all right there on the, in the pen written.
So seven months.
So, you know, obviously we don't want to uh give out a permit, it's, check is gonna bounce, so if you could agree to uh approve the permit pending the clearance of the of the payments uh made today.
Okay, sounds good, that's what I was gonna ask.
And then what happens if, say, seven months from now, or eight months from now, he's not, they're not caught up, what is our recourse?
Then, then then we uh, the town adopted Mass General Law, chapter forty, section twenty-one, which allows us to hold a hearing to revoke or suspend or deny a license.
Okay. So we don't have to approve the license today contingent upon continued payment, we can simply come back to the issue and
That's right, it's right in, right in the Mass General Law.
And
You can't uh dissolve a marriage license that way, though.
Here, so we need a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Pending, how was that again?
Uh there was no pending really, just
The check, okay, the check clears.
Oh, I'll clear, so just
Check.
Yes, correct.
Alright. Make a motion to approve the triple A licensing, um pending the clearance of the check that w- we was give, w- w- that we were given for today.
Second that.
Okay, just just um any discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Check.
Just to clarify, so we just all saw a check there, that was just an application fee, we're not talking about the check to pay
Add to the
Oh, yes, mhm.
taxes, yes, okay.
Yep, okay, yes, second.
Yes, okay, second and amended, any further discussion? If there none, uh we'll vote, uh all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous? Old business, um we've got the veteran services agreement discussion, David, you've spent a lot of time on this.
Yes, I have, uh I also have very productive conversation with Templeton. Um so the city of Gardner is asking that um the veteran services uh uh the Department of Veteran Services to formally uh put together a veteran service district consistent of five towns um all contiguous to um um form a uh a veteran service district to that would um be s- uh housed by the town of of the city of Gardner, uh but would be dedicated one hundred percent to uh veterans and their benefits and their dependents and other people who take qualifying, it'd be a full service operation, we would have representation and be able to vote on daily, on the yearly uh budgets.
Have you talked to Br- to Ryan about this?
Yes, I have.
Is Ryan in favor of this?
He has a very strong opinion about how to do this.
Okay.
Alright. The
Not, not.
not to do it.
Okay.
Alright, the service agreement uh would be for tw- starts at twelve thousand five hundred for ten twenty-two, that's this current year.
Goes up two percent.
Twenty twenty-three goes up by two hundred and fifty dollars over there. Um
Quick, quick history, so Ryan, before he came here, was like a veteran services, if you don't know his history, that was his history.
I was part of the um the group with Ryan that put together the original Ashburnham Westminster, Hubbardston.
Sorry.
So my conversation with Templeton is um today was very productive. They have a uh veteran service officer who works nineteen and a half hours a week, um the town administrator there said, why don't we, Hubbardton, hire this person for four hours a week? Um and she'll be our employee as well as their employee, there is no need for an inter-ministeral agreement. Um that would be a considerable savings of the
With the employee, is she uh
She'd be working four hours a week.
Yeah, but is she in favor of that?
She, yeah, she's in favor of it.
She would do that?
Yeah, she's got the time and the capacity to do that.
Is four hours enough?
For
For our town, I I don't, I was curious.
Yeah, she's, she thinks she can do it in four.
Okay, so, so
I originally started with eight.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So what's Ryan's uh
Well, his take on it is that um that this should be done in a, in a very comprehensive way, and going to a district is not the way to go, it just forces everybody to go as cheap as they possibly can, uh and you're not getting any value to the service. Um he said that for the money that Gardner's proposing, that we should go with a part-time V- V S O.
Which we just have to find, which are really hard to find.
Yeah.
And stick with, yep.
But we have, we have a candidate in Templeton.
Okay, right.
So how much would it cost for us to hire this young lady from, or whoever she is from Templeton?
I think you would be spending something like five to seven thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Which is about half.
And you're, you're paying eight right now.
Okay.
And he's in favor of that?
Hmm?
Is he, is Ryan in favor of that? Or what
The T- the Templeton.
Yeah, so he would rather go that direction than go with Gardner.
Still
Yep.
Hmm.
Goodness, I mean, Ryan's in charge of it.
I I, I mean, I literally would defer to whatever he, I mean, it's it's um
He's very passionate about this whole thing, so
Correct, he's gonna live with it, um so I'm I'm just
Yeah.
That's what I think.
Do you want me to pose the question directly to him?
Yeah.
Okay, let's uh, let's do that.
Alright, anybody?
I'm very comfortable with doing the Templeton thing, I have lots of reservations about the Gardner piece,
Okay.
including the long contractual piece that goes through the end of June at twenty twenty-four.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't wanna get stuck in another contract, I just, you know.
I hear ya.
You know?
Yep.
Well, that and the terms to get out of it is a hundred and eighty days prior to the end of the fiscal year, it's a long time.
That's long time.
Alright.
Alright, so if you wanna take a vote contingent on Ryan's uh recommendation.
Vote for the Templeton?
Yeah.
Do we know what her name is?
David.
Oh, sorry.
Pelletier. What's the first name?
Ms.
Misses, maybe? No, Ms.
Well, when do we need to, I mean, do we need to, um
Well, Hubbardson would like, I don't know, uh Gardner would like us to have done these contracts yesterday, um
Yeah, 'cause don't we have like nobody at the moment?
Yeah.
Right now we don't have anybody.
Yeah.
So I would, I would move this forward as fast as
Well, I would ma- I'll make a motion that we uh take the uh proposal uh with the town of Templeton and with the hi- with the hiring of the, is it Ms. Pelletier, for a period of four hours a week, pending the approval of our t- our town administrator, Ryan.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I would just like say, do do we wanna restrict it to four hours? If we're actually asking Ryan, what do we wanna say?
Well, David said he started with eight, uh and she s- said she felt
Yeah, I'm just saying, 'cause Ryan hasn't had a chance to chime in yet, so if he if he just says, you know what, I I know that four hours is gonna be enough or something,
Oh. Sure, yeah.
maybe sort of defer to
Whatever he suggests, yeah.
You know, up to up to eight hours, wanna say that, so Ryan doesn't say, huh huh, forty hours a week, you know, so, not that he would, but you know, just just
Mm-hmm.
What if we do it within our current budget of what we budgeted for that amount? So that gives David wiggle room to go from four hours to whatever we have in like
That works too. Yep. But it works too.
Mm-hmm.
coppers.
Right.
Is that, is that
It's fine with me, 'cause it can
I'll second that, that'll be the amendment.
Okay.
allows David to talk to Ryan and we can go ahead with it, yeah.
That makes sense, within within the framework of our existing budget, okay. So the amendment was seconded, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, unanimous? Sounds good. Alright, thank you. So we got, we've got uh, so we've got a few items here, so we've got cell tower discussion, uh gen- uh general discussion, um what do we need to talk about here?
Thank you. I need a little bit of guidance, I'm writing the uh the uh R F P for the commercial self-carriers.
Horizon, there's your guidance.
Oh, Horizon, there's two, Horizon and A T and T, just jump them up there.
Just kidding, I'm just kidding, yeah. Just kidding.
Alright, so so the f- the cash, the payments, that's where I need some help. But so far as I know, that the agreement is that the cell tower gets, the revenue goes directly to the district, the Rutland Regional Dispatch District, they use that money to lower the assessment,
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
they would spread that around to all the towns that they s- that they serve, not uh s- not target that lower assessment to Hubbardston. And the board didn't like that uh arrangement, but that's the arrangement that we have, it, are are we gonna take another direction? What should I, what should I be telling the carriers?
Uh So so you're you're saying that's not the direction the board liked, because when we discussed this previously, we we said, well, that sucks.
Yeah.
We we probably didn't know that that's the way the agreement's structured, which is how the, you're telling us now that that's how the agreement's structured? Is that regardless of which town, this sort of a tower gets built in, it gets spread throughout the communities?
That's what I'm told by uh Mr. Moriarty.
Okay.
Yeah, that's crap, it should come to Hubbardston.
Right, but I mean
But I know, it's crap, though, I just none of the other, e- unless all the other towns are gonna start throwing up cell towers, it's crap.
But the other, there are other towers.
No, they, I asked that question, there's no other cell towers, there's towers, but no cell.
No. Oh, yeah, 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 no, I know, so we're talking specifically cell, or are we talking
Cell.
Cell.
'Cause that's where the money comes in.
'Cause there'll there'll be the dispatch equipment, the enhanced D N W, the
Right. Yeah.
So they'll be making money off of our
Yes, their their, theirs goes down because we had the foresight, or not we, but Hubbardston had the foresight of
space for two carriers.
Mm, yeah.
let's put a couple towers up there and the tower people will pay.
Alright, let's just think about this, you know, I hear ya, and I couldn't agree, but we got the land given to us, right, as part of, you know, the agreement with the seniors um
Yeah, I know. Yep.
and the grant to be able to get that, so, you know, we didn't, besides manpower and uh frustration, um we we, the land didn't actually cost us anything. The, all of the geotechnical evaluation, the contracts, the 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 actual facility itself as far as the tower, none of that cost us anything either, right? And then we're we're putting an R F P out that someone's paying us to put these up there.
I get, I I understand where you're going with this, but I do have one long-term question. What happens, say, five years from now? Uh this is all up and whatever, and we're, everything's hunky-dory, and we decide it's like the same kind of scenario with Gardner that we're having with Rutland, what happens if we somehow moved to a different area?
Dispatch, you mean?
Yeah, and we weren't with Rutland anymore, then what happens to this whole hot mess? 'Cause that could, I mean, right now it's not a problem, but what if it becomes a problem?
Yeah, that's a good question, I have no idea.
Just, just out of curiosity, whatever happens with this whole tower, the cell, money, 'cause this is a
And they Is it an annual payment or a once in a lifetime, like
It would be, it would be annual payments.
Okay. So is that something we would just work out with K P law to get the contract that says, you know, the original um beneficiary would be the town of Hubbardston, as long as Hubbardston is part of the regional agreement, it goes there, but if the regional agreement ever severs, then the money reverts directly to Hubbardston?
Or
'Cause who does the tower belong to?
or the portion, or or I, maybe, right, but or the portion that normally would have gone to Hubbardston as part of the agreement now just separately goes directly to Hubbardston. So they still get their portion, we still get our portion, it's just not in the same mechanism as it used to be. I'm not, I don't want that necessarily to be the language, I'm just saying like I I
Who's
Well, who does the tower belong to?
Moriarty's group, I think.
Hmm?
Yeah, they're appropriate.
Or does it belong to the town Hubbardston?
No, I think it's, I think, well, I'm I'm
They got the grant, you know, so the grant was not to the town of Hubbardston, the grant was to them.
Yeah. Right.
True, but it's our land.
Right.
Is that a K P law question?
Yeah, I don't know the answers.
I know, there's a lot of, and there could be a lot of back and forth, and that's what I'm saying, this could be hot mess at some time.
Well, we wa- we also asked for the tower, because I was on that committee
Well Yeah.
that met in Rutland with uh Mike and so forth, and uh so we were offering, because we wanted a tower and needed a tower.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
They have the grant, and that's how it all came about, you know.
But, well, just just from from their side of things, I I agree with you, Jeff, and um
Yeah.
the tower needed to go there for the system to work.
Mm-hmm.
So if we didn't offer it, anyone else could have offered it, and they would have been like, well, we don't wanna put 'em there, so we just accepted
Yeah.
that the spot that we had happened to be the centralized position, so offer's strong, I think, but, so they know that too, I'm just sort of saying that out loud.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, but yeah, no, I think it's K P law, uh all these questions you're hearing here.
Yeah, so I mean, there's the demolition of the thing twenty years from now, removal of equipment, upgrade, repairs, right of access, all of that stuff is being spelt out with just the money, I didn't know what the pleasure of the board is.
Yep.
Well, it's the, we just gave you a whole bunch of more questions than what the answer to, you're welcome.
Yeah.
We should know how much, how much money it was, we're just, I, we don't know that, right?
Never a dull moment.
It's usually fifty percent of the uh of um revenue generated by the gadgets.
That is fifty a a billion dollars or
So, uh
Yeah, I know, fifty of what?
So call it, each gadget will generate about forty thousand dollars of revenue a year for the company, so we would get half of that.
Uh
We, meaning the five towns?
Or the 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 five towns, we get half of that.
Yes.
Yeah. So we're looking at four thousand, that's if it were twenty, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know that it's worth the big fight about that.
Well, I'm just saying, it's
Well, you just need to think about what happens if and when we go a different direction, but I think that might be potentially a K P law, they might have language or
Yep.
Yeah.
Especially if you weigh it against the fact that we need a cell tower in this town.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, no, no, it's really, we almost pulled out, Ri- Ryan got really pissed off at this guy a couple years ago, we almost pulled out, like
So Yep.
you know, we we be, because they jacked up the the, our assessment significantly, and it had to do with, you know, questionable compensation, you know, we had a we, it was cranky time for a little while, so um we sort of worked it out, but um that it's valid, 'cause that could happen.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I just think, you know, I think it might be K P laws likely come across it before, where they say,
Yeah.
how would you like to do here, and if you'd like to say it comes back, you know, one of the benefits of having us as part of their regional agreement is that they get a little money off of each of the town's pieces, which is a lovely thing, but if we were to take our bat and ball and go elsewhere, then we take our cell phone tower revenue with us.
Maybe, right, so can can we find that out?
Hmm. Alright, I'll 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 continue working on this.
Yes, sir.
Do, do we know if the number of cell providers is limited?
Two.
Two.
So you know it's gonna be, you have the option of getting two different providers.
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
They, um, on the plus side, everybody in town is probably gonna have better cell service.
Oh, yes, yes.
Mo- most of us, yes, yes.
Still, most.
The bulk of us will.
All of us Verizon people will.
So, yeah.
Just kidding.
Yeah, there's still, I mean, if you get it, it's
So it's not so much money, but there's another benefit to having a tower down.
That's a good point, no, it is, it is, it is definitely for all of us, we've been here for decades, yeah.
Point I was trying to make, yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so you'll find that out for us, and then we can maybe uh
We'll we'll dig into it.
Alright, sounds good. Uh marijuana discussion, old business seat, um May seventh, two thousand twenty, Royal Farms signed eighteen-month agreement, need to extend community host agreement Uh marijuana discussion, old business seat, um May seventh, two thousand twenty, Royal Farms signed eighteen month agreement, need to extend community host agreement to May and have discussion, so you alluded to this earlier when you said that uh Damon doesn't have any plants in the ground yet.
Right.
Um and then we have a uh agreement that um will be expiring soon.
Like November.
Right, um June, July, August, September, October, November, like last week.
Something like that.
Okay. So, um
The select board has the discretion to extend the the uh the uh the contract.
I had asked you to invite him, you remember?
Yes.
Did did he decline, or did he not respond, or do you know?
I s- I think I forgot to invite him, sorry about that.
Okay. No, no problem, so um you know I don't know, I mean
Uh you did invite, you did ask me to invite him for the December meeting of, and
Okay.
So why don't we put this on?
I don't, can we?
I
Hmm?
Can we, if it expired, he's got plants in the ground.
He doesn't have plants.
He doesn't have plants.
Oh.
That's the point, it's like we don't
Damon doesn't
Oh, I thought it was the Crane, sorry.
Nope, nope.
He doesn't have he doesn't have plants in the ground.
The other guy, okay, okay.
Yeah, so there are no
Oh, so this is Damon.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. So can we put it off, uh just um Well, what would you recommend?
What I recommend is that we don't wanna be in a situation where the community host agreement expires and he has to start over at square one.
Oh.
Can we continue it till December thirty first, giving us time to meet with him in December, and you know, that way we can even look at his clause he didn't like last time and anything else, and just fix everything, we need to, if anything, at once.
Well, I was thinking of the agrarian cycle, and thinking, when can he have plants in the ground? Um so maybe the maybe extend it to May and have plants in the g- in the ground as part of the performance metric that you
Oh, I think we very may well do that, but I think what Heather's saying is, let's just do it to the thirty first, knowing that we're gonna meet with him in December, and then at that time decide, you know what, it makes sense to extend it some period beyond, right, Heather?
Yeah, that's where it's going.
Okay.
That sounds good.
That way it also entices him maybe to come in with his representative in May. Or not May, sorry, December, December.
Yeah, we got you.
You know where it's going.
Yep. You gotta come though, you gotta be here.
Oh.
Yeah, I know, you're gonna like, do you really, really
Yeah, gotta be more
Hey, you guys said we could do virtual meetings anytime, so we do it.
Gotta be more Yeah, we lied, we lied, we lied.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen any extension, he doesn't come.
Okay.
If he's not interested.
Alright, so uh I guess there would be a a motion necessary to extend the agreement through December thirty first, two thousand twenty one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the uh marijuana host agreement to uh December thirty first.
Twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one, yeah, okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, and so, uh just one one thing I I is we're in discussion, so discussion, um David, should I should we should we recommend an amendment to that that says, and give me the authorization to s- 'cause we probably have to sign something to extend that? Or no, if we don't, we don't.
W- we can just do a letter, uh it's an addendum.
Sounds good, okay, forget it, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, um seeing none, we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, okay, unanimous?
Change order.
Okay, school roof, uh uh change order for thirteen thousand dollar credit, so this is basically um
The leak, is that the leak?
No, this is this is just, you know, at the end of a project, so you've got unit prices with estimated quantities on things, sometimes you don't have to fix the certain amount of bricks, or don't have to fix a certain amount of windows or whatever else, and so you have a plus or minus sort of a balancing change order, so at the end here, that turned out to be a a credit, David, do you have anything to add to that?
No, that's I I'll do it.
Yeah, we had a we had not the quite uh we had penultimate uh meeting the other day, um w- with with all the parties, um the it was confirming that the punch list had been complete and and all work was done, it was a a nice, you know, nice meeting, everyone um really happy about the the product and doing it during difficult weather conditions, but also specifically material acquisition commission uh conditions, and I think most importantly, as much as I said before, and I said this during the last meeting, and I said it to all the the parties there, uh how how thrilled I was about how the administration really took the project personally, as far as um you know, uh Hubbardston was concerned, the happiest person was our principal, who said that the product is fantastic, the 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 workers were unbelievably respectful to the kids and the staff during their month and a half of work during school period, which was not anticipated in the first place, so for her to just be really happy about, you know, how it all turned out, seeing as it went a lot longer than she initially thought was was probably the best thing to hear out of all of it, you know, so
While we're on that, though, what is happening about the leak?
Yeah, so we asked that, so what's happening is a uh a patch is gonna be put in place, um uh so there's 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 a section, um you know, maybe twice the size of this table, um that uh has um cupped, uh so the the the, you know, two inch um uh wood floor, uh that got moisture in it, uh has is sort of wavy now, and it's, you know, dangerous if you're gonna play basketball or something on it, so what they're going to do is um they're going to be doing a patch of that section, cutting it out and putting a new one in, and then giving it a light sand and finish, it's not gonna match, and that was our big thing, it's, you know, it's gotta match, so they're gonna do that, um while they work all the insurance numbers out, uh which which is they've agreed to, and that could happen next year sometime, where they put in the permanent, and they're working with the school for the best time to be able to do that during a break, so that they can get in there, give it the proper cure time, so there's no kids in the gym while all the fumes are there and all that stuff, so everyone's really thinking about it, and they're gonna do it, I think, you know, when whenever makes most sense.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, anything further on the school roof?
I think that
That's it, okay, alright, um so we've got uh the next item on old business is Lombard Road, uh discussion follow-up, uh this this was part of our discussion last time about um monies that we were gonna be asking, and Gobi for, David, you have an update on that?
Yeah, things are happening fast and furious, um the 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 Senate has passed their version of the ARP of m- uh bill it's different from the um from the House version, the House version doesn't uh include money for roads and bridges, whereas the Senate bill does not. And at this point, I don't think Lombard Road made it to the Senate version of the bill. Um they're gonna go into reconciliation, bring the two bills together, merge them, so that they are one, and then they send that off to the governor. It's gonna happen by Wednesday, 'cause the formal session ends um
This Wednesday.
this Wednesday. So they're burning the midnight oil. We are not necessarily out of the running for money for Lombard Road, um hoping that the House um transportation element of their of uh of um ARPA will be included in the Senate package.
So so an update on the on the value too?
Yeah, so two hundred thousand dollars is the number that Gobi's office came up with.
Yep.
Um we could maybe do a portion, a third or a half, uh if they gave us that that kind of money.
Yep. So, you know, we 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 originally, as we talked the last meeting, uh we sorta had to get a quick number, and David got a number of a half million, we asked him to ask for a million, uh or eight hundred thousand, or some some whatever, and I think he did, and they were like, well, you can have, anyway, w- it became clear, it all happened so fast, as he was saying, so there's a couple hundred thousand dollars that that may be available, and then we're just gonna have to find out, again, we're not restricted to Lombard Road, we have the option, uh like we discussed last time, to to add some chapter ninety money, or or others to the money that we see, so I think it sounds like right now, it's only gonna be um um presumptuous, or i- it it's a little early to do any of that, until we find out pretty soon whether or not we're included in this, and then we can sort of go from there.
Yeah. There are seven hundred and twenty-two amendments to the Senate bill, though.
Jesus.
Uh and I did a quick word search for Senator Gobi in Hubbardston, uh things like that, chapter ninety, uh and I didn't find any really good hits there.
Yeah. Okay, alright, well
Mm. But it's not trapped on Lombard if there's not enough the monies, it could go
Pro- these things are usually r- uh written in such a way that it would be for roads
Of roads in general, yeah.
in general, the town of Hubbardston.
Because two hundred thousand, I mean
That's not even gonna do it
that would the bulk would be uh on us.
Yeah, that's the time we're gonna make a dam, or not road.
Yeah, and if we were gonna try to, you know, if it were, if we if it was gonna Travis had said, you know, he thought six fifty for the road, if it was gonna be five hundred or some number there, and we could kick in a you know, a a an amount that made sense, but we're, you know, to to go broke on our our chapter ninety funds, to be able to to do to do this is is probably not
Yeah, I'm
the right idea.
We we're sh- hunting elephants here, we may have the we may just see a rabbit.
Yeah. Okay.
So we're naturally, we're grateful for any money that the the legislation can give us.
Okay.
David, does my memory serve me correct, did we also talk about also asking in Gobi for a smaller chunk of change for fiber project connecting?
Yeah, so there's an eighty-two thousand dollar project to hook the five municipal buildings up with fiber.
Okay.
Uh that didn't make it into the uh Senate.
No, no, no dice.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, but not not as an earmark, but there is a there is broadband infrastructure in both the House and the Senate bills.
So maybe it'll go in there.
Yeah.
That might just mean that, you know, we get to then apply for the state for money for the project, we'll go that way.
No, I think they're g- I think this is gonna be a disbursement.
Oh, you th- okay.
I think we're gonna get the our portion of three point eight billion dollars
Nice. Yeah, but what's our portion?
Our portion would be a lot less than that.
I know, I'd be like, oh, tiny.
But they th- they're talking about giving it out in the summertime.
Get the bucket. Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna begin some training on this on Thursday, so I'll have a much better uh idea of how things are shaping up.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Alright, so we've got your TA report next, uh you can give us um, you know, a summary of what you wanna discuss there.
Alright. Alright, we've touched on a lot of these, so
You've put a couple out on our agenda, just to remind you that the three that are on the agenda anyway are the holiday schedule, are we meeting on December twenty ninth?
November twenty ninth.
November twenty ninth, and then the MMA meeting and trade show.
Okay. So let's start with that, um so Christmas and New Years occur on a Saturday, which we usually give the Friday off, but most of the employees work on Fri- don't work on Friday anyways. So I'm gonna say for those people who work on Monday through Thursday, you can have Thursday off, those who people who have to work Monday through Friday, you can have Friday off,
Mm-hmm.
and those people who have to work on Christmas get the bonus that they that they're contractually obligated to have. It seems like that gives everybody a a holiday or or compensation for their time.
Mm-hmm. I think it's fair.
Yeah, sounds sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah. Mm.
Um
Gives them time to travel too, if they have to travel, you know, so
If we uh are we meeting on November twenty ninth, and I say this because you will only have one meeting scheduled for December.
That's what, the thirteenth?
The thirteenth, yeah. And you've got a lot that's coming up in uh December.
Yeah, I'd say we're meeting on the twenty ninth.
Alright.
Can we always put it on, and then, you know, if you have nothing, you cancel us?
Absolutely.
Which building?
We ex- we expect to see you with a baby, yay.
You will, he you might just have someone in tow holding it, ah whatever.
Locked in the bathroom, on her phone.
That is gonna be complicated, if it's a joint meeting.
Trust me, I had six kids, I can hold the baby, it's fine. Hold like twelve babies, and still, yeah, and still get stuff done.
Sacked potatoes. Alright, David, what else?
MMA meeting and trade show in Boston, do you usually attend?
Uh over time, some of us have gone now and again, um uh I, you know, David, I mean, sorry, uh Ryan, I think, went to the the one before he left that wasn't COVID, um
Yes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, people all we get we get notified of it, and some some people go sometimes, have you ever been?
Yeah, I've been. Oh, alright.
I'm a fifty percent.
'Cause I was working on, I usually work on the weekends.
What do you mean?
I'm fifty percent likely to go, the fifty percent is contingent upon the small one.
Oh, okay. Okay, sounds good.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so we would need to know if people wanna go, 'cause we have to arrange for hotels and registrations and all that.
Yeah. Why don't you get give us the details when when you have them, um and if you, I'm sure we can all find it too, but if you wouldn't mind doing that, so we can respond to you.
Okay. Alright.
Do we have funding in our budget to cover the select board to go?
Heck heck no.
Oh, that's what I was thinking.
Select war expenses, we have a select war expenses.
Do we really?
Yeah.
Oh.
We have a select war what?
Expenses.
Oh.
It's time. Nobody goes, so it's rare, Heather can go, it's fine, she needs to get away for a couple days.
Oh, no, he would go, we would be handing off the child.
Oh. Oh, okay, well, you're welcome then.
Have fun.
Alright, what else you got?
Uh CPA, the Church Exterior Rehabilitation, they uh we received a draft grant agreement from council, which is, it gave some good uh insights into, it's under review by the CPA committee. Council asked a question as to whether we want to go with a full-blown mass historic preservation restriction, which would take several months, and they're very picky about what they'll allow, or do we wanna go with a local preservation restriction, which would have the same effect?
So I I read David sent this to me today, as well as sending it to CPA, so um and I provided some comments, just to to summarize what what he's talking about here is is if it if we have to get the full-blown mass historic, again, KP Law commented on this, I'll get to that in a second, then then it gets very specific on what types of materials you use and and all that, if you remember when when this was being presented to us, we're not using necessarily historic materials, we're we're
Psychic.
we're restoring the historic integrity, I don't know what words to use, so it becomes tricky when you're doing this full-blown mass historic, and the local historic gives more latitude in there, and is just as effective, is what KP Law said, so it seemed to me upon me reading it, that it seemed to like a no-brainer, that that the local um would suffice.
Mm-hmm.
That, do you have the same impression?
That's that's the way I would go, I've had some experience with NHC getting a historic preservation restriction on a couple of things that
Yeah.
a dam, for example.
Yep.
Um jump through hoops like crazy to get that one done, and it's a bunch of rocks on top of each other.
That's what I do for work, so you're just trivializing it, basically.
It's just rocks, Dan, it's just rocks.
That is good. Um, okay, well, do you do you, we need to, you don't, we don't need to
No, just 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 a little, giving me the
just notify us?
actions, other than that, I think things are going well.
Excellent, alright, thank you.
Can I ask a couple questions, Dan?
Of course.
As always.
Right.
Um David, what was how successful did we feel that the public outreach meeting was the other night, we seemed to have several people attend, but have we had many people um after that meeting seem to state um an inclination towards donating their property?
Yeah, we we had somebody uh d- uh fill out the do- donation pa- papers just the other day.
Okay.
Uh the person I spoke to directly
Okay.
in that meeting.
We've got a few overall, but not, you know, it hasn't been like a windfall, so in the interim, and I think I mentioned this last time, the reason that we asked for some additional money at the last town meeting was
Okay.
uh to get some additional help from T E C uh in the process, and they've recently given us proposal
Mm-hmm.
uh for um helping out, you know, push along the process a little bit more, and and they got, we got some good feedback during that meeting, during the roundtable discussions, which is as much as we tried to uh send people information on what your property was gonna get affected, people are still like, I don't know what I'm looking at. So
They're okay, yeah.
um still, of you know, everyone who was there in the room that that we saw was happy to have have clarification, but we'll need some additional stuff, so I think to to answer your question, uh we've gotten just a little, uh a few of them have come in,
Okay.
but we now um have uh some additional money to be able to spend to help push along the process.
But one thing that I that hit me was the, I don't know the gentleman's name, you seem you seem to know him, presenting the problem of with that intersection.
Lou?
Yeah, yeah, the with the uh the semis, you know, hitting the the the
Was a whole tire tread that if you go look, there's a like a tire tread right up against
The pole. So I mean, no, it hit me that that this is something si- serious and something that has to be addressed.
So, yeah, he he's also Lou.
Mm-hmm.
So, um but but agreed, um at one point he called us stupid, so if you recall that, I definitely heard that. So um we are, I talked to the engineers about it afterwards, um when it gets to this point in the design, which is a hundred percent design, with plan specifications and estimate, we're in the cusp of getting out to a point where it's gonna get to bid, it is tricky um making um changes like that, however, uh because we have this public safety piece of it, uh the engineers are gonna be pitching it to Mass DOT, say, hey, this is some new information, you know, would you cover it, because basically that's what we wanna know, if they'd cover the cost, it's expensive to move it, and and it's a basically a guy pole
Oh, it's huge, you know, that's
yeah, for the um the light that's there, and it's in a location that's um not ideal.
To move to the common area, you know, yeah.
Somewhere else, right, not ideal, so we're we're
That we're looking at it If they can't or won't, is there uh room to put Brigham as a no truck like Elm Street is, which If they can't or won't, is there uh room to put Brigham as a no truck like Elm Street is, which granted the people on Evergreen will probably be very upset about that, but 'cause that corner up there is ridiculous, like just driving my truck down it.
Yep.
Yep.
I freak out half the time 'cause it's like there's no wiggle room, and I'm not driving a rig, but I'm still driving a big truck, so there's, it's
So it's.
it's a sketchy little bit.
So that'll make Evergreen a major route.
Well, just for trucks, you know what I mean, for for unless it's local, unless it's
Kind of. Old Bristol Road, Evergreen.
Unless it's a local delivery, yeah.
So, yeah, I think, so that's separate from the town center project, so that's something that we would have to investigate sort of beyond that, but but yeah, I mean, that's, we can always ignore that.
Yeah.
I'm.
So I think that's, well, if if they're unwilling to move that pole, I think that's the only other.
And then the other option is is that was brought up um by Tom Robinson, was whether or not the town, separate of the project itself, could somehow fund it either through whatever means. Could somehow fund um that as its own little standalone project at some point, it makes sense to do it while the other active construction's happening, but we do have a little time till until that's gonna get ripped up, so if we if we find out through from T E C's contact with Mass DOT that they won't, for whatever reason, then maybe we s- we readdress at that time and say, hey, um we've got some time, can we, do we want to fund it, how much they gonna cost, that sort of thing.
Mm.
Okay.
I have two other questions if I could, um the audit, David, where are we at with that?
Yes. Well, they have completed the review of the uh tw- twenty-one um uh uh lease expenses for the town, uh all the financial op- operations, special trusts, um revolving funds, all that's done. Um they've sent me a a request to look up five procurements, to make sure that we're following the law on that. And then we're waiting for the uh Worcester County Retirement System to complete their audit
Okay.
so that they can post our portion of their liability to our our numbers.
Okay.
So that's, it's pretty much done except for information about five projects and Worcester Retirement.
Alright, so it should be coming down the pike soon.
I think Worcester Retirement is gonna take a month or two, so.
Okay. But we'll meet any deadlines that we need to make, for bond ratings and so forth?
Yeah. Yeah, so we can get a preliminary uh audit uh to the uh financial people, that'll be enough to keep your bond rating where it is.
Okay, and then my last question, just under town actions and community events, what we have for the um the finance or operating budget and so forth? Do we usually include when we loop in finance committee on here? Like is there a time where our, it is finance committee, right?
Yeah.
I keep going from, my brain keeps going back from advisor to finance, and I'm like, I don't know which is which. On the budget, at what point do they look at materials?
Uh well, a couple of couple of dates.
'Cause I wasn't seeing it in the in the list here.
See, I I didn't I didn't ba- I didn't sort of identify the actors in.
And I know every town's different as to, you know, select board gets it first, finance gets it first, no, it bounces back and forth, it's a game, ping pong game.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's usually spelled out, I mean it, but yeah, no, it's David just stated it that way.
Alright, December twenty-third, the budgets are due, the draft budget is submitted on March seventh, so the five-year capital plan on January tenth would in we would invite finance committee to that.
Okay.
We would invite uh December th- thirteenth, the presentation of five-year analysis, that's finance committee.
Okay, and that's our only meeting in December?
Um. For now.
Okay.
Uh s- so December thirteenth, January tenth.
And then public.
March seventh. April twenty eighth, fifth.
Okay.
Probably May third. I was there. I don't have May third.
May twenty-third? May.
Matt.
Matt.
But no, but you said May third, did you mean twenty-third?
May tw- twenty-third, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thanks, David.
So I offered to um with the finance committee, I offered to uh uh do like a a walkthrough of how do you calculate out the various forms of municipal uh revenues, you know, how much money you're gonna get, where is it gonna come from? And how does that compare to the the prior year's performance? So they they were interested in taking me up on that offer, so
Okay.
I'll do a no-nonsense approach to the the uh the the revenues and expenses and talk about tax rates and proposition two and a half and just go over all that stuff.
Okay. Excellent. And then one last question before I forget, ARPA, do we have a first meeting set up yet?
No, not yet.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything.
I'm I've been waiting for a number, it's a magic number, so that I can uh give that to the ARPA committee, it would be the calculation of lost revenue for FY twenty-one, twenty-two. Um 'cause I'm thinking that number is gonna be substantial.
Okay.
Okay, um alright, so TA report, thank you, um policies to review, we we don't have any, um Manor's not reasonably this by the chair, I I don't have any, does anyone wanna bring anything else up?
No.
No, okay. Um public press questions, anybody uh out there, um wanna prolong this?
If Destiny Super wants to prolong it, look at her hand up.
Okay, um.
I'm to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's not debatable, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, we are adjourned at eight.